All right.
She's in Kansas.
Like to like to welcome everybody back to Alabama Care. Today, we have Mrs. Tracy West, who is currently on the Board of Education here in the state of Alabama in District Two on the east side of Alabama. And we have Mrs. Brittany Alexander, who is a mother, also a constituent in District Two. And today, we're going to be talking about the Board of Education. Mrs. Tracy West is running for reelection as the incumbent. And what exactly the Board of Education does and the upcoming May elections on the 24th? At this point, I'd like to hand it over, Mrs. West, if you would introduce yourself.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Tracy West. I live in Auburn, Alabama. I have been serving schools since my oldest daughter Lydia started kindergarten at what was Auburn Education Center, AEEC, used to be the name of it. And it was a citywide kindergarten. And I was asked to volunteer for her classroom. And was is still is, I was a local small business person, still am. And I began giving my time in school. And later, the I served on the Lee County Youth Development Center Board as a volunteer for children that were at risk. And then later was asked to serve by my mayor and city council on the local Board of Education. And I did that for two terms. In 2019, I sought the position of State School Board Member and have been serving in that role almost four years now. And it's been a great honor to serve the students and families in District Two.
We appreciate you being with us this morning and giving your time there. So it sounds like you've had a number of years involved in this system of youth development, youth education. What exactly does the Board of Education do here in the state of Alabama for anyone that's not familiar with it?
Sure. So, and it is confusing for some people. It's think that we are lawmakers. We are not lawmakers. We set policy. And Alabama is actually a local control state. So the local school board actually sets policy inside of state and federal guidelines. And so we have in Alabama, what's called the Administrative Code for Education. And our role is to make sure that the law is upheld, that our local school boards are spending their local tax dollars properly. Because we pass through those dollars from the Department of Education. That money goes out into the local school districts. And then also, we monitor assessment, make sure that our children are learning and progressing. And in the case of special education, of course, we've got federal guidelines that are very important. And our role is to make sure that those locals are upholding the federal and state guidelines when we are referring to children with special needs.
Now, what would be an example of something that the Board of Education has worked on in the past year? Just so people can get a hardcore example of what exactly goes on there?
Sure. So I'm fairly new to the board, obviously. And when I first came on the board, one of the things I noticed immediately that really puzzled me was our textbook adoption law. It had not been really reformed or touched since, I believe, 1998. And what we were doing at the state level was basically taking in whatever materials that publishers were sending us. We were issuing contracts on those materials, but we weren't really sharing with the locals. It's sort of a grade, if you will, on how well those materials adopted or matched our state standards. Were they, we were simply just passing them down to the locals without really giving them enough information. Were these grade appropriate? Were these materials, was there anything controversial in the materials? So in my district, which is very rural, you might have a district that just simply has to buy textbooks off of state money and has no additional local dollars. And they might simply buy a textbook or adopt a curriculum because it's the least expensive. Well, if you can't afford, you know, an expensive curriculum and you buy the cheapest, it's not always the best. So we've reformed that in the last session. I was very proud of our legislature for taking up the charge on textbook reform. And now our local school boards receive matrix, if you will, with grading of the textbooks that we're sharing with them so that they can make a more informed decision. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna be very beneficial to us in the future that this law was reformed.
Yeah, so it sounds like that is a lot of transparency there of communicating with constituents how these decisions are made about textbooks. And then also providing equal access to the same educational material for maybe some districts that aren't able to purchase the different monies there. At this point, I'd like to hand it over. And I'll kind of follow up at the end here and kind of take us out. But Mrs. Alexander, I'd like you to introduce yourself.
My name is Brittany Alexander. I live in Auburn and I have a six-year-old daughter with Down Syndrome and a dual diagnosis of autism. She is part of the Auburn City Schools and she attends Richland Elementary School.
And thank you for being here with us this morning as well. One of the things we're going to talk about today is special education in the public schools. And I know there are a lot of interests from the disability community in what the public schools are doing to help individuals and families. Mrs. Alexander, would you like to kind of jump in with some of your questions for Mrs. West?
Sure, absolutely. Ms. West, besides attending the State School Board meetings, what can or will you do as a State Board of Education member to engage parents and teachers from your district?
Normally, what I do is, well, because I'm from here and I served on the local school board, people do stop me at the grocery store and the post office and they know where I work. And my cellphone is published locally and it's published on the state website along with my email address. I have a policy of trying to reach everyone within 24 to 48 hours of or phone call. I'm certainly happy to meet with parents anytime and local school board members. I do regularly keep myself up to date on all of our numbers in terms of the number of children that we're serving with Down Syndrome, with autism, those who may be deaf or blind. We have, as you know, various categories of service for individual children. And so I try to keep up with that reporting regularly. And it's important to me to know what each of my districts look like in terms of who they're, what children they're serving. We may have some districts that only have a few children with special needs and/or we may have others that that have greater, more catastrophic needs.
Jane, thank you.
And certainly, if a parent group invites me, I always attend.
Oh, wonderful. That's good to know. We certainly might take you up on that. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next question. In the 2021 legislative session, a $50 million financial math and science teacher incentive program was passed. Many parents and educators feel the longstanding teacher shortage in special education was overlooked. According to at least one legislator, special education was not included in the incentive program because it was not brought to their attention by Department of Education leaders. If elected, would you recommend and support a plan to incentivize highly qualified special education teachers? Why or why not?
Absolutely. I think, you know, the teacher shortage is affecting every school, but particularly hurting the classrooms of our children that have the greatest needs. So I absolutely believe that those teachers should be incentivized through the pay raise and the matrix. And certainly based on their, the longevity of their service, just like any other teacher in our state. And again, I don't pass the law, I have to uphold it. But I certainly would advocate to my legislators that special education is is no different than general education in terms of how we incentivize those teachers.
Thank you. Yes, that would be great. I know all our special education teachers are very important to us and spend a lot of time with our children. So it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Also, on that note, there are some concerns over the recently released State Department of Education's plan to address the special education teacher shortages. A provisional certificate is being developed where someone with a bachelor's degree in any field can be hired to teach special education in grades six through 12, if the candidate agrees to certain stipulations. First, what are your thoughts on these provisional standards?
Well, it's a, my understanding is that it's a temporary education certificate. It can be issued for three years, but I believe it's just grades six through 12. And I did make, take some notes for myself to remind myself. So under the provision, the individuals would have to take five college courses in special education. They would have to participate in the Alabama Teacher Mentor Program, which we are, have been continually in the process of making that more and more robust so that we can come alongside our young teachers and make sure that they're really developing and honing their professional skills, particularly when it comes to special education students. They have to, once receiving a praxis, passing the praxis subject area test for special ed, then they can move on as long as the local superintendent endorses them. So in my mind, it's not as though we're just handing over teachers, just anyone into the special ed classroom. They actually do have a set of requirements that they have to complete. And obviously, we want to make sure that we follow up closely from the State Department of Education with each superintendent that may be using this temporary special ed certificate.
Thank you. And the next part is.
And for me, that is a policy question. So what is going, what is our policy? And it's my understanding that our policy would be the follow-up piece where we would be making sure that each one of those teachers is successful and getting the necessary supports in the classroom.
Thank you. And the next part kind of has to do with the praxis, as you mentioned. So if a provisionally certified hire does not pass the praxis, what suggestions will you make to the State Department to address students not receiving instruction and support by qualified teachers?
Well, if they don't pass the praxis, they cannot get that Class B educate, professional educator certificate. So, and we're in the middle of that discussion right now about praxis scores. There have been some discussions about eliminating the praxis. And I'm actually gathering a lot of information right now to help better inform myself on what other states are doing. But I will say that the steps I have asked, if the superintendent's recommendation in this area is aligning with other states that are performing at high levels and we are in alignment. So I do feel a little bit better about that. And, and I'm looking forward to the discussion on the praxis, but I don't have all the information yet that I need to form an opinion.
Gotcha. Okay. And speaking of the other states, Texas and Georgia have already passed legislation regarding camera usage. Would you support cameras being added to classrooms for monitoring and identifying teacher training needs?
I actually think that's a really good idea. I think that that could help in several different areas. Not only, obviously, safety and supervision, which is paramount with our children, but also in training and development of our teachers. Recently, I read a report that our young teachers are saying that they are struggling with classroom management. They're struggling with the skills that they need to help manage the classroom. And I actually think the addition of cameras or recording may help us better develop those teachers if trained professionals can observe how that teacher is handling his or her classroom and maybe help them in developing their skills. So I'm not at all opposed to cameras. I think it might be a very, very good idea.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see. Are you provided with special education performance profile data and reports for each of the systems in your district? And if yes, how do you use this data to make recommendations to support closing the learning gap for students in your district?
I do receive reports and it's, it can be broken out in several different ways. So some of our school districts in District Two have children with catastrophic needs like feeding tubes or they need constant care, a nurse available to them when they're with us. Other children, other districts may have a greater need at the high school level with life skills, training and helping those students develop and possibly like go into the Eagles program at Auburn University. So what I do is look at the individual districts. How are the children? What are the greatest needs in that district? Is there anything that I can be doing or advocating for from the board position? Excuse me. From my board position to help that local board? Does that local board need additional support? And I'll give you an example. I had a district just north of us that had a child move into the district that was in severe need of additional assistance. Assistance with a bus, assistance with a nurse. And the local superintendent called me and said, you know, we've enrolled this child and we've not had this type of need before. Can you help me? Well, when I was at Auburn City, you know, we had several children with severe, in severe situations. And so I knew immediately who to call to help that superintendent get more information. And then that local board can decide how they want to set policy and spend those funds, where to get those funds, when you have something like that come up unexpectedly. Very often, you know, your school board is passing that budget for the year and then something will happen and, and they will need additional funds. And that's what I'm here for, just to help advocate and support for that local school board. And, and they're supporting the parents and the children.
That's wonderful to hear. Thank you. And thank you for sustaining that superintendent with that need. The next question is going to be, I guess, a little more broad scope. Can you give a brief response on why you think Alabama should or should not continue with an elected State Board of Education?
I think at the state level, an elected board is actually more reflective of the district that they serve. At the local board level, I really enjoyed being an appointed school board member. I answered to the people locally. They saw me, they knew me, they could call me. My mayor, my city council appointed me there for one term. And if they didn't like my service, they weren't going to reappoint me for a second term. And we are term limited in Auburn, so I only serve two terms. The state level is very different in that you're really proposing an education budget, which is quite large. It's the largest budget in state. And then you're upholding education law, federal guidelines and state guidelines, and then working with your local school boards. And so I think because the district is so large and our districts are so diverse. So for example, the eastern side of Alabama is very different than the Birmingham School District or the Huntsville School District or the Mobile School District. I mean, we're very, very rural and our needs are very different. The large population areas for us are in Lee County and in Houston County. The rest of District Two is very rural. And you've got districts that do not have a lot of tax dollars, extra money. So they really live off of the state funds that they receive. And I think it's important to know that the school board member that represents you understands those needs and can make policy decisions in the best interest of all the children. And when I say all the children, I do mean children with disadvantages, children with disabilities, gifted children, children that live in districts that may have no industry and those that might live in a district that has a major university. So I do think that that is important, that that person be elected by the people and that the people know that that person is in tune with the entire enrollment of students.
That makes a lot of sense and helps clear some of that up. Thank you. Well, Ms. West, I think that's all the questions I have today. I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us. Alex, did you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to jump back in here. Really appreciate that. I just want to acknowledge chat here. Savannah is in the chat saying, "Great job to everybody." Cersei's saying hello. We have a question here that I think stems a little bit from the pandemic when we didn't have the traditional school system going into the classroom. And a lot of kids were doing the online learning. However, some students have difficulty with the online and receiving that information. Has there been talk about using various formats of textbooks, such as print material, those types of things for students that need those?
Absolutely. So we've learned a lot during the pandemic. And I actually advocated, I want you all to know, for not shutting school down. I really believe that our children need to be in classrooms with really well-trained teachers and great materials. And so I know that we've just released some funds for the Alabama ATEC, Alabama Technology Education Conference that's coming up in June. And it's specific to special education. There are going to be some presentations regarding technology, better use of technology for training our special ed teachers and for giving that technology to our students. Our special ed students need to have technology available to them to use and enjoy, just like a general education student or in a general ed classroom. And so I know that the State Board is advancing that in this summer conference in June. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
We'd like to blast that out as well. Do you know where that's going to be located? Is it in Birmingham, Huntsville, or?
It's in the Mobile Convention Center. And I believe the dates are June 15th through the 17th. And I believe you could look at ATEC, Alabama Technology Education Conference. And so, you know, that's where educators are really going to get some additional training. And there's going to be some specific work done around special education. And I believe it's a parent, let me think. Let me get my little note over here.
You, the Board of Education and the state of Alabama are throwing resources behind getting teachers and students additional technologies.
Yes, yes. This will be the Alabama Parent Education Center. It's a brand-new contract through special ed and it's going to be training services, resources and family focus groups on technical assistance for parents and students with disabilities. And so that's a $42,000 contract that's going to be a part of that summer conference, the Alabama Technology Education Conference.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. And I know we have a, we're kind of wrapping up here. I have another question from chat. Each year, the state publishes performance profile data on academic outcomes, reading and math scores. There, and if they're meeting the state academic goals, do you see the results of those?
Specific to special ed or all students? Yes, we do see those results. And I can't remember what month we received those, but I'm going to say it's summer because the spring data comes to us in the summer going into the fall. So, and there's a lot going on right now with a new, with our new A-CAP test. So I don't think I'm mixing anything up, but I believe we'll get data in the summer.
Now, what does the Board of Education do if a district is not in compliance with standards?
So immediately, we would send in a team from the State Department of Education. We'd unpack exactly what's going on. Sometimes I have seen that it's not that people intentionally did not follow guidelines or standards. It's that they didn't realize or know what was the expectation for that school district. And so in that case, we go in and remediate that and correct that. And if it's continues to be a problem, then the local board will need to step in. And, you know, that's an employment matter then for them because they've, they've hired people to be there running their school district.
Yeah, so it's a little bit of retraining everybody involved, making sure everybody knows the expected outcomes. And if those don't get met, then it comes down to the local rehiring to make sure we get the right people on the team. Speaking of hiring, why do we have this teacher shortage?
Oh, goodness. I could spend an hour on that. Well, first of all, I think that the profession itself has, has not been talked about very well. You know, we don't speak about teaching as a true profession, a calling, a wonderful way to make a difference in the world. And so I think that colleges of education are last on the list when recruiting students. They're recruited in the engineering and architecture and nursing. And, and we haven't elevated the colleges of education the way we should. I also think that we haven't paid, up until now, we have not rewarded adequately the brilliant young people that want to go into the teaching field. And they say, "Well, why do I want to be a teacher if I'm only going to make X? I could go into business and make so much more for four years of undergraduate study and another two years of a master's program." Now, I think the legislature has set a new matrix that's going to help us recruit. I also think that latest trend data tells, tell us that teachers have been under a ton of stress in the classroom. They feel overwhelmed and there are discipline issues, class management issues. And so we've got to do a better job of supporting our young teachers the first five years there in the classroom and really help them build that muscle of being able to manage the class and content in the classroom. And I think many of our school districts are starting very robust mentoring programs. I know we are at the state level to try to come alongside and help teachers be successful. So, and also Alabama has lost people to our neighboring states because of retirement structure and pay structure. And so I think now we are getting those things corrected. And I'm hoping that we'll retain more of our teachers and maybe even steal a few from our neighbors.
So for anybody looking to get into the profession here in Alabama, it sounds like you might be getting some additional training and support and maybe a little bit of bump to your take home. So that would be quite nice. Now, you're currently on the Board of Ed. Money Talks, I like it. You're currently on the Board of Education and you're running again. The election is May 24th. What is kind of your platform for this next four years? Or why are you running again? What needs to happen?
Well, when I came on the State Board, I was so excited. Well, when I came on the state board, I was so excited because it was an opportunity to help the state write a strategic plan or a master plan for student achievement. And we did that, took a year and citizens from all over the state participated, which I was super excited about. And it rolled out in March of 2020 and something else happened in March of 2020. And it caused us a major roadblock to our student achievement. And I'm really running just to continue that work. I truly want to see that strategic plan implemented across the state. I want to see our students growing and achieving year over year. I am intensely committed to our students having a plan when they graduate from high school. I want them to be productive, independent citizens. And I think that through the strategic plan and through the funding that the legislature is providing us, we've got a great opportunity. And I would just like to see that through. I would like to see, have four more years of, of really volunteering my time to give back to my state because I love my students.
Well, we really appreciate you spending the time with us this morning. And I want to say, you know, thank you to both of you. From a parent's perspective, Mrs. Alexander, I think this is showing a lot of individuals that they can reach out to their local representatives, that they can ask questions. And Mrs. West, that the representatives are open to conversation and learning more. So I think this is very healthy dialogue here. Now, as we kind of come to a close, I'll start off, Mrs. Alexander, is there anything that we haven't talked about that you'd like to say to the audience?
Well, thanks, Seth. We've covered a lot of the issues that I wanted to discuss with Ms. West.
And Mrs. West, is there anything that we haven't talked about that you'd like to say to the community?
I don't think so, except to say that I'm always open to learn. I want our policies to be really, really good for students. And sometimes I don't, I just don't know the right question to ask, but I love to hear from parents and grandparents and teachers when they have an idea for a better policy. So I do have an open door, an open ear. And anytime if someone is listening you would like to talk to me, just please do reach out.
And we'll go ahead and make sure that we put your website in the chat so anybody can reach out through that. And you guys have May 24th. Make sure you get out, make sure you're registered to vote, make sure your voice is heard. I am not in District Two, but Mrs. West, you got my vote.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll go ahead and end the live session and we can all give a wave to our cameras and say, "See you guys next time."
See you next time.
Thanks again, guys.